Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Laborman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, our first presentation is Sarah Fields talking about Child Support Awareness Month.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So, as Commissioner Rice has mentioned, it is August was Child Support Awareness Month. And for many years, I would come and chat in September and talk about kind of Child Support Awareness Month and the state of the child support program. Like a lot of things over the last couple of years, I haven't been here in a while. We took a little kind of break during the pandemic and I haven't come and report. But I thought now would be a good opportunity to come back and kind of talk with you not only about Child Support Awareness Month, but about kind of the child support program in Montgomery County, where we stand, some of the things that we're working on, just to kind of give everybody an update. So, Child Support Awareness, uh, let's see. So, like I said, we're going to talk about child support awareness activities in just a little bit. And we'll talk about more about this picture. But this is the picture, every August, we have a Child Support Awareness Month photo contest during the month of August statewide in Ohio. And this was our photo that we submitted with great assistance from our communications team. You'll hear a little bit more about the campaign we put together. But it was a great collaboration this year with our communications team. And they helped us put together our composite photo and get the word out across Montgomery County that we did have Wear Green Day. And you can see, we had lots of participation from the various agencies and elected officials across the county. And I don't want to spoil alert, but we did win for our picture this year. And so, we'll talk about that in just a little bit. But there was our photo that we submitted. So, it's just one of the ways that the county really kind of digs in and supports all the different programs here in Montgomery County, as evidenced in our photo, which was shared statewide. The school year, so we are actually almost at the end of our, what we count as our year coming up here in the next couple of days. So, these numbers are almost a year old at this point. But for our 2021 numbers, what the federal government likes us to take a look at and the state government is the four areas of performance for us, which actually intuitively makes sense when you think about the goals of the Child Support Enforcement Agency. And so, the first one is paternity establishment. How many people need paternity versus how many we've established it for? The same thing with support establishment, people who need child support orders, how many have we established? And then current collections, kind of very intuitive, of the support that's owed each month, how much of that are we collecting? And then arrears collection, if we didn't collect it in that first month where we should have, and it becomes overdue, how much of that are we collecting after the fact? And so, those are our numbers in federal fiscal year 2021. The standard is an 80% standard for the, what the federal government considers, you know, hitting those marks that you want. So, you see in our, our support establishment, paternity establishment, we're hitting those fairly easily without a problem. Our collection numbers lag a little bit behind those, not to make excuses, but that's fairly common in metro areas. I don't know a metro area in the United States who hits, hits that 80% mark. Seventy is considered like, you know, stellar. So, we're, we're close to that. I always like to say that in Ohio's metro counties, if you look at the six largest counties in Montgomery, in Ohio, Montgomery County leads those in arrears collections, and we're second in current collections. So, all those numbers aren't, you know, any point where we want to, you know, quit and we continue to try to raise those numbers. When you compare apples to apples, we're doing fairly well in our collections numbers. What's going to be interesting, interesting for us for the next year or so, is kind of seeing where we're going to balance out in some of those numbers. Child support, unlike a lot of human services programs during the pandemic, we saw our numbers go up, believe it or not, in terms of collections and, and not so much in the establishment, in the collections era, because we were able to withhold from a lot of sources that we hadn't been able to withhold from in the past. When you think of all the extra unemployment resources and things that were given, we kind of seized a lot of enforcement during the pandemic because people were in, you know, difficult economic situations. But we were able to collect at kind of, kind of higher levels. So, Montgomery County, like the rest of the state, in 2022, has seen some of those numbers go down because some, again, some of those extra programs are, have been rolled back. And so, we're kind of waiting to see where we're at in terms of when we, when we get our fiscal numbers, which again, will roll out early next month for the full fiscal year. So, what we're kind of looking at is 2019 to kind of try to do more of a comparison to see pre-pandemic, post-pandemic. So, I'm kind of interested to see where those numbers are going to hit. We're kind of following in line and getting more with 2019 than the last two years in terms of those metrics. But performance, of course, is more than just the numbers and collections. And we also, you know, really focus on how we're helping the public when they have questions about the child support program, about how we're communicating with them, explaining what can sometimes be a complex and emotional time for them. And so, just like to share some of our customer service metrics. We answered in, again, in last year, over 60,000 calls with average wait times of under two minutes. So, we, that's pretty successful to be able to take a call agency in this day and age and generally wait for less than two minutes. We have an online chat program, which is eight to, eight to 4:30. So, anytime anybody wants to hop on our website and chat with us, opposed to giving us a call, we have that fully manned. And so, we took almost 10,000 chats. And of course, we're available by email, which is becoming a much, you know, is one of the ones that we see increasing, almost 15,000 emails. So, we have what we call a service level that we try to look at to make sure that we're returning all of those contacts with, if not immediately, which is the vast majority of them are immediate, but if not with immediately, within, on the case of emails, within one business day. And so, we have that service level at 95%. And our phone service level is at 94%. So, again, we're pretty proud of those numbers. When you look at collections, performance wise, again, we were up a little bit in 2021 in terms of collections. You see our collection about over the $100 million. We take in over 2 million of that at our payment window in the Job Center alone. So, we have a significant presence there in terms of people still like to come in and make a payment, the old fashioned action techniques, lots of like bankruptcy, probate, those kind of things. But we also kind of involve ourselves in, in civil actions where we see that somebody may be getting some kind of civil actions to, you know, personal injury, those kind of things, and work with the local attorneys to kind of intercept those funds. And so, we, we take over $400,000 a year in that. So, that's pretty successful. Just some raw numbers, what that work that we do represents, 300 paternity actions, over 3,000 judicial hearings our legal staff attends a year. And that, again, is, is a number where we're still kind of ramping up after pandemic times. So, that's where we're at with some of those numbers. So, talking about Child Support Awareness Month, I just wanted to share some of the activities that we did. This is, this is a month, again, in August, where we try to highlight the program and some of the things we're doing in the community. And like I said, we had a great partnership with our communications team, Reba. See her, she is in the back. She's new to JFS, but she hit the ground running, let me tell you. We did a lot of stuff. I was, I think, on all three or four major television stations, Good Day Dayton, all those kind of things. So, it was our, our picture. So, we had a great month. We had a continuing legal education event. We had that in, in the end of August, where we had upwards of 25 local attorneys come and learn about child support and get free legal education hours out of it. And so, that was successful. That was back on August 26th. It was a virtual event. We kind of had done it pre-pandemic, did it in person. During the pandemic, if we did it virtually, we kind of stayed with virtual because, I'll tell you, that's, that's the, the new wave for CLEs, is everybody likes to do them virtually. We, one of the things we did new this year, which was kind of exciting, we didn't, we actually sent appreciation letters and certificates to our local employers. We were able to pull a list of our top 70 local employers. We focused on the local ones because we get approximately 62% of our child support that we get in Montgomery County comes with a employer withholding. And especially for small business, that's not a small ask for them, you know? It comes with a lot of paperwork, a lot of work on their end. And so, sometimes they're the unrecognized partner. And so, we wanted to do, recognize them this year and say, hey, we realize this extra work that you're doing for us as a business community to support kids in the community. We don't, we don't, we don't, we want to thank you for that effort, extra effort you've put in. So, we sent letters with a certificate to, like I said, 70 local employers. And it may seem small to them, but we just wanted to say, hey, you know, we, we got over $64 million you withheld for us over the last year. So, you know, thanks for that. And so, we sent those out. We didn't get a ton of feedback, but the feedback we did was, you know, hey, you know, again, we're from those payroll teams and things out there was, was appreciative. So, that was something we'll continue to do, I think, over the next few years and focus on that. We also did our license reinstatement opportunity. This is something we've done for the, for many years now in the month of August, where we kind of relax some of the state requirements, I'll say, to being able to give people their licenses back. Usually, it takes three months payment to get their license back, once we've suspended it. In August, we like to say, if you come in and work with us, we're going to give that, that three-month barrier really breaks down people's ability to kind of come in and work with us. And so, we, we come work with our, we have a Seek Work program with our workforce team and business services. It's a very successful program over the last couple of years. And during this month, we bring them in and we, we ask for that one month's payment, but then we link them directly with that, with that Seek Work program over and, and under the same roof in the Job Center and get them keyed in with lots of the programs that they can be successful in over with that team. And so, we bring them in, we have that discussion, and then we follow up with them in 60 days to see, you know, once we've taken that one payment and referred them, where are we at with that? And so, we did, that was one of the things our media campaign focused on. And so, we think that extra push with the media this year, we also did a Facebook campaign, which was great. And so, this year, we were over, we were able to collect $32,000 on cases that at minimum hadn't had a payment in at least three months. But I'll tell you, the vast majority of them have not had a payment in much longer than that timeframe. So, that was over almost 120 cases that we took those payments on. And 15,000 of that, so almost half of it went to cases that are arrears only. So, cases where they're trying to, to get that case resolved. I kind of included some of the past years. We, 2021 was a much, we didn't do a lot of driver's license suspension, obviously, during the pandemic. So, 2021 was a much smaller year. But so, we're back, if you look at the last 19, 18, 17, 16, the 2022 numbers are back in pace with those prior successful campaigns that we've had. So, we also had a coloring contest, and we were able to select four winners across two age categories for our coloring contest. We have the prize, it was a backpack of school supplies. And as you guys know, you helped us out and were our blind judges on that event and helped us pick those winners. And so, you see one of our featured winners that came in and picked up their, their prize with their, their picture. And so, she was very excited when she got the backpack. So, it was just a little bit of fun, again, to focus again on the kids who are the, the recipients of the, of the program. And then, we, like I said, we had our Child Support Awareness Month, our Wear Green photo. And we actually, our one photo won two awards, believe it or not. We won, there, there are three different, four different categories, three of which were judged by independent judges. And we won the most collaborative category. So, that was excellent, like I said, with our, with our team photo. But then we also won the fan favorite, which is what voted on by Facebook likes, you know, the, the all-important social media likes. And so, we were able to win that award as well. So, you see our two trophies, our two photos, and that's at the OCDA meeting, where we were awarded our, our two, so we won 50% of the prizes. So, that was pretty, that's pretty awesome. And just highlight, again, these are programs I've talked about before. You know, the thing, the key to child support is that, you know, we're a program that really pairs well with almost any other program that works with children. I like to say, we, we serve over 55,000 children in Montgomery County. And so, yeah, we're one of the largest programs that works with children, second only generally to education and the number of families we work with. And so, these are some of the other programs that we offer in terms of, we work with, we offer parenting time services to, to families that qualify, that comes with mediation and different parenting classes and things like that. I already talked about our, our success, we're very happy. We kind of went a different route a couple of years ago with our Seek Work program and brought that back in house through a partnership with our Business Services Division. And we're seeing much stronger results with that ability to collaborate. We get much more one-on-one communication with that team. Again, we're all in the, in the Job Center together. And so, you know, we can walk people over there to the, to the red section, we take the long route, we can get them over there. You know, we have, we're the ability to communicate. And so, we're seeing a lot more success with the people we refer. There's still a challenge getting people to, to cooperate with that program, but once, once we get them in the door, they're good. They're, they're, they're very successful. So, we're happy with that. You know, we were part of the Path Ahead program, which is, you know, focusing people that, that benefits gap. You know, we're not the lead on that by any means, but we do refer a lot of people to the program. JFS on the move, you know, we're out in the community. We work very closely with Mike and the Fatherhood Commission. And then the Office of Rancher, of course, we're very involved in all the different teams that are, they're helping people return after incarceration. So, we just wanted to highlight some of those partnerships. So, this is a, one of our photos from the past. It's a beautiful Montgomery County, but I'd like to thank you all for your support. As I like to say, when I come, I, you know, I'm very involved at the state level and work with lots of child support directors in all the counties across Ohio. And they are always very jealous of the support that we get at our local level from our commissioners, both moral support and the, you know, that we're, and the budgetary support we get is, is unrivaled across the state. And so, we're very lucky to have that. We talk about it all the time. Same with them, with our, our county administrator, Mr. Colbert. We get, like I said, the, the attention that we get from you guys is, is, is a point of jealousy from, from my colleagues around the state. So, thank you for your support of our program, and I'll take any questions if you guys have any.
I don't have questions, but I, I would just say that, you know, this is a challenging initiative, a responsibility that you have to ensure that our children have the support they need to, in order to succeed, as well as to help those parents find a better future. So, I am just amazed at how creative you can take something and make it so welcoming and just creative and innovative. So, my hat, you know, hats off to each and every one of you. And of course, we fully support this because as those children and families succeed, our community is going to succeed. So, of course, we are very, very proud. But I got to tell you, you set a pretty high standard now to win half of the prizes in one year. Wow, what are you going to come up with next year?
Yeah, we've won collaborative for several years. And so, now my, my staff is all like, what are the other two categories, which are like unique location and creative? So, they're, so they're, they want to go after those now. We're talking about skydiving. I'm like, okay, I don't know. All of our insurance will cover skydiving guys, but.
So, what was the unique location this year?
I think that was Allen County, and they went to one of the barns, the, you know, the Ohio, visit Ohio barns.
I see in the thank you one, though, we went to the new library. I mean, we went to some creative places that year.
That was our one, I think, from maybe 19. Yeah, we went to a lot of different locations. Yep.
Well, Sarah, I, I just want to say, you know, every time you've come and presented to us, the numbers are, you like to do an amazing job. You really do, and we are so thankful to you. And it shows if we're, you know, number one and number two in the state on, on certain areas. And we know it's because of the way our team works together. You know, I've observed the, over there, and, and, you know, everybody knows how long somebody's been waiting, and I think that's so important. And then the online chat. I sat with a employee once, and it was just really, that's so helpful. I wish more people use that.
Yeah, our team, you know, they're great. As you can imagine, when people call us, they're generally, they don't call us to say, hey, child support's going great for me, right? Usually, they're calling us because they have questions or concerns, or talking about people's money and their kids. And so, you know, our, our people are, you know, our, our case managers, all of our front desk, everybody, you know, they're very, they're great, they're very dedicated, you know, they're, they've learned well how to, you know, calm people down and kind of chat with them. And, you know, I always tell people, you know, we've done our job when people are generally in the middle, right? They might not be exceedingly happy, but, you know, they're, they're not irate either. So, we aim for that, you know, kind of middle spot.
Well, I think the short wait time is, is amazing.
Right.
That's great.
Yeah, our goal is, we try to have that philosophy of balancing compliance with compassion. You know, that's where it is. We have to have that compliance because compliance, you know, it sounds technical, but it means, you know, we're supporting kids, hoping people be economically, you know, self-sufficient. So, we have to have that compliance, but we try to do it in a way that is compassionate for what people are going through in their lives.
Thank you so much.
Because it's so important, the, the waiting. I mean, you know, how many times have we called places and, you know, someone will be with you in a moment, then you hear music, and it goes on and on, then they come back on. Someone will be with you in just a moment. It just takes forever. So, the fact that you have frustrated people on the phone, that's, that's great. But you know, I was just echoing what they've said, but, you know, the winners in this whole thing are the kids, no question about it. So, thank you for everything you've done and the staff. Please give them our best, and that's great, great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, great team effort. I really appreciate it, your role, especially in the state level. It's just, I, you just, all this is just leadership. So, so thank you again. Thank the team for us. And then moving families, getting families to, to work through Seek Work program, I think that's phenomenal. The collaboration between you and our workforce team, I think, I mean, that's where you want to go ultimately. You want to try to get people to a point to where this is self-sustaining for the children. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we will turn to County Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Several resolutions today. First resolution, Resolution 1432, authorize the closing of Mad River Road between Havenhill Drive and West Ridge Road lasting for approximately five days for sanitary sewer extension. Resolution 1433, advertise and provide public notice for the Lamb Road Improvement Project in Miami Township at an estimated cost of $2.6 million. Resolution 1434, release 100% of the maintenance and cash sidewalk bond provided by Divided Ridge Associates Limited for Washington Trace, Section 11, Washington Township in the amount of $61,950.27. Two agreements, Resolution 1435, Woolpert Incorporated for the Geographic Information System Professional Services Project in an amount not to exceed $25,000 through June 30th, 2024. Resolution 1436, IBI Group for the West Central Improvement Project, Harrison Township in an amount not to exceed $31,550 through December 31st, 2024. Resolution to amend certain agreements with the Brumball Construction. Resolution 1437, Philadelphia Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Project, Butler Township by adding $117,353.70 to the original amount for a revised total of $2,817,456.8. Resolution 1438, Little York Road Bridge Replacement Project, Butler Township by adding $59,364.45 to the original amount for a revised total of $484,735.45. Resolution 1439, Air Hill Road Bridge Reconstruction Project, Perry Township by adding $400 to the original amount for a revised total of $361,475.21. Four more resolutions related to the process of payments by warrant for permissive tax funds. Resolution 1440, Village of Farmersville for the 2022 Center Street, Humble Road to Jackson Street project in the amount of $9,678.50. Resolution 1441, City of Clayton for the 2022 Westbrook Road Paving Project in the amount of $87,464.62. Resolution 1442, Village of Verona for the 2020 East Main Street Reconstruction Repair Project in the amount of $35,000. Resolution 1443, Village of Verona for the 2021 East Main Street curb and gutter repair project in the amount of $35,000.
May for approval.
Before I second, how's the roundabout coming down there on Mad River?
It's coming along very well, Commissioner. As you know, it's already opened. The last remaining items, there were some landscaping items that need to be completed, and the street lighting, that's also an item that needs to be completed. There've been some supply chain issues with getting the luminaires and the, and the poles, and we hope to have it completed, I would say, in about four weeks.
Okay, good, good. That looks great.
Commissioners, I would say too, Gary and T'Paul, the work you guys did on that Philadelphia bridge is fantastic. And it's amazing because you don't realize not being able to cut through Philadelphia, having to go all the way down the dogleg. But I mean, that bridge looks fantastic. So, you guys are doing some great work.
Looks good.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Domestic Relations Court.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Domestic Relations Court, we have Resolution 1,444, authorizing a facility rental and catering services agreement with Sinclair Community College in an amount not to exceed $1,969.84.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Juvenile Court.
Under Juvenile Court, we have Resolution 2, authorization agreements. Resolution 1445, the Ohio State University to collect, enter, and analyze and report data for the Juvenile Court's Family Treatment Diversion Program in an amount not to exceed $8,500 through September 30th, 2023. We also have, excuse me, Resolution 1446, Recovery Works Healing Center for Mental Health and Drug and Alcohol Counseling Services for Youth and Adults, identified through the Juvenile Court's Family Treatment Diversion Program in an amount not to exceed $75,553 through September 30th, 2023. We also have Resolution 1447, West Care Ohio Foundation, Inc., to provide assistance, advocacy, and support services for adults identified through the Juvenile Court's Family Treatment Diversion Program in an amount not to exceed $59,864 through September 30th, 2023. And finally, we have Resolution 1448, Page Freezer for Social Media Archiving Subscription Services in an amount not to exceed $2,998 through October 2nd, 2023.
I move for approval, but before I move on, we move on, I just want to give again a shout out to the Juvenile Court Family Treatment Diversion Program. You know, that, you know, you think Juvenile Court, why are they doing that? Well, it's an excellent, excellent partnership that we have because each of those families that we can help them early on and through this diversion program is, is so important. So, and, and you know, it's the whole family, you know, that needs to be treated, not just the young people. There's a reason things are happening in that family. So, this has really been a good model, and I'm glad that we can still support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. It also is a great partnership, and Jerry knows this, with our Job and Family Services and our Children Services. So, thank you. Thank you for your support, Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have late, two late items from the County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under the County Sheriff, we have authorization agreements for assessment of services through June 30th, 2023. Resolution 1480, Wright State University School of Professional Psychology in the amount of $5,000. And 1481, Wright State University School of Professional Psychology in the amount of $2,500.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on September 13th, 2022. Resolution 1449, approval of bills. And Resolution 1450, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for your consideration on the agenda today, beginning with Resolution 1451. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's office. 1452 selects the bid and authorizes the purchase from Spacebound Incorporated for laptop computers and related accessories for the Board of Developmental Disability Services Project at their lowest and best bid of $77,107.50 through December 31st of 2024. 1453 authorizes an intergovernmental agreement with Miami County Emergency Management Agency to transfer ownership of equipment purchased with fiscal year 2018 State Homeland Security Program, SHSP grant funds. 1454, authorize a lease agreement with the Montgomery County Agricultural Society for the leasing of 8,375 square feet of office space located, located at 580 Calumet Lane through December 31st of 2022. 1455, authorize a rental agreement with the Montgomery County Agricultural Society for use of the main event center on November 16th, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $2,345. And this is for the Environmental Services Calendar Contest. 1456 rejects the bids open on September 14th, 2022 for the Madison Lakes Training Center renovation project and readvertise at the revised estimated cost of $318,641. Fourteen fifty-seven accepts a quitclaim deed from Wright Dunbar Incorporated for real property known as Lot Number one zero five four nine in the city of Dayton. The next four resolutions authorize agreements. The first is four fifty-eight with Civic Plus LLC for website design and development services in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents through September twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-four. Fourteen fifty-nine is with Outdoor Enterprise LLC for construction of the Truck Terminal Paving Project at their lowest and best bid of one million five hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents through July thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Fourteen sixty's with Navia Benefits Solutions Incorporated for flexible spending account plan administration in Cobra. And fourteen sixty-one is with Rumke of Ohio Incorporated for trash hauling and recycling services for various county-owned buildings through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three with an option to extend. And the last two resolutions solicit bids. The first is fourteen sixty-two for BioSolids Management Services for the Environmental Services Department. And fourteen sixty-three is for the rival building, fourth floor Public Defender Office Renovation Project at an estimated cost of six million two hundred and twenty-two thousand and eight hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
I'll second. I have a question, Tyler, about fourteen fifty-six on the Madison Lakes Training Center.
Yes.
What, what did the, do you recall what the bids came in at?
I don't recall the bid that we had. I know we only had one bid from an out-of-state contractor over the engineer's estimate. So, we've slightly revised the price, and we're going to go out and kind of shake up the market and.
Okay, all right.
We exceeded the ten percent, Commissioners, so.
Yeah, okay.
That's it. But, noticing, Commissioner, we also have fourteen fifty-seven.
Yeah.
And this is our Wright Dunbar quitclaim deed.
Yeah.
So, Tyler, you want to talk a little bit about that project? Because that's going to be exciting for the whole community.
Absolutely. So, the Wright Flyer Sculpture is currently in storage, formerly at the Engineers Club. So, we want to bring that back to the gateway, to the Wright Dunbar District. And so, we have procured two parcels from the city of Dayton. This is the third, and this is currently out for bid.
The artist's rendition is beautiful.
Yes.
That is going to be so nice. You're going to be able to see it from the highway.
From the highway.
It's really nice.
The lighting, the knee wall. So, thanks, Commissioners, for your support.
Well, I thank you guys, because, you know, when we first got the call about it, it's like, what are we going to do with this thing? And it's taken us now, what, two years?
Yep.
Yeah, but it's going to be so nice, so.
Great partnership with the Wright Dunbar community.
Yeah.
Well, I think it, it just shows that, you know, you can end up getting a really good solution that doesn't immediately come to mind. Because I think it'll be very welcoming.
I think so, too. Well, along with the bridge, you know, it kind of wraps that off, and, you know, it's just, it's just going to be really nice, so, thank you.
Absolutely. So, you second me, right?
Yeah, I did.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have two items on the agenda and plus one late item today. First two are to accept subdividers contracts. The first is Resolution fourteen sixty-four, Chick-fil-A Incorporated for the Chick-fil-A Washington Township Development. And the second is sixteen, or fourteen sixty-five, Scott Durston for the Mad River Road Sanitary Sewer Extension Development. And the late item is Resolution fourteen eighty-two, declare an emergency and authorize a high-voltage service cable repair and replacement by Lake Area Electric at a cost not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Michael, do you want to talk about that last one?
Yeah, Commissioners, I can't thank Matt and his team, Donnie, enough. We had a weekend power outage at our Western Sewer Plant, which is a huge plant as far as the number of people that it feeds from operations. And Matt and Donnie and the entire Western team really jumped on it, a partnership with AES because they came out and worked it with us this weekend. And, you know, we found that we had a bad cable. We had a generator go out. Our generators ran all weekend, and we had one of our generators go out. But Matt and his team really led this effort, and they worked hard all weekend long. And so, we are so thankful for our entire team. And again, please tell Donnie and the whole team at Western, they, they just did a fantastic job. You want to say something, Matt?
Yeah, we have a great team, and the fact that, you know, these things happen, right? And it just happened to be on a weekend, but we have people on standby. We had people come in, so great team effort. Donnie Hartman's our plant manager out there. He stepped up. His supervisors both were in. We had our maintenance staff out there. And, you know, the challenging part was getting the cable. They had to search, you know, work with some people, and they were pulling this in from all over Ohio to make that repair by Sunday. So, a lot of things came together, and it's, it was great to see, so I appreciate the support.
It was amazing work that you guys did. Thank you. Michael was sending us updates and pictures and the flame out.
Yeah.
Wow. And then we saw the pictures this morning of the cable.
Yeah.
My gosh. Happens, aging infrastructure. There we go. And that's why we've got to continue to focus on our infrastructure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, thank you guys a lot.
Yeah, be sure and extend our thanks to the team.
I will, I will.
We're actually going to bring in Commissioners, the team.
Right.
And we're going to bring in.
Oh, nice.
The same day we bring in Bob Downing and the team, because they received an award, so.
Good.
We're going to have an Environmental Services Day.
Yay, good, okay, great, thanks.
Did we?
We did.
Okay, I'm going to get lost in the conversation. Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Human Services. Good afternoon.
Commissioners, we have several resolutions for you today. The first is fourteen sixty-six, which is to solicit a request for proposals for the delivery of child abuse and neglect prevention services to eligible residents of the Ohio Children's Trust Fund Western Region for safe this way year two thousand twenty-three. Resolution fourteen sixty-seven, which is to submit a consolidated application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the OH five oh five Dayton Kettering Montgomery County Continuum of Care in the amount of twelve million seven hundred and forty-two dollars and seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. And just to say a word on the continuum, this is the largest source of funding for our homelessness housing services within the community. It also supports our renewal projects when it comes to homeless services, shelter services, also our HMIS system, which is our database system. In addition to our coordinated entry, Rapid Rehousing, so it is very significant to our community. And I thank that homelessness housing policy board and our staff that helps get us to this point of submitting that application. And community volunteers I also have to support say thank you for this.
That's great.
Great job, Jerry. Also, the work on the shelters that you are doing is pretty spectacular. You know, adding to the, Commissioners, you gave us the additional dollars from CARES Act that we were able to ping-pong on what Jerry's doing now and Jessica with the shelters to make the shelters even better.
Good.
And I would just add, since I serve on that board, so Kathleen Channing, I mean, every person on that team is amazing, as well as all of our partners. But I would also do a public thank you to Reverend John Paddock, who retired as his choice after, I think, twenty-six years.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty, and he wanted no public to do, but I'm going to defy that anyways, and thank him publicly for his many years of service. That whole team of people committed to this issue are amazing, and it's an honor to serve with all of them.
Yeah, when, when we first did the task force, you know, he was one of the strong voices twenty-plus, twenty years ago. He, yeah, he'll be missed. He really will. He had such a passion for people, and, yeah.
Of course, Michael and St. Vincent, that team.
Oh, yeah, they're all there.
You know, so.
There's a lot of players in that field.
Okay, and then Resolution fourteen sixty-eight, which authorizes an agreement with multiple agencies for system of care, family centers, so assistance supports for children and families in an amount not to exceed eighty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-one cents through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Fourteen sixty-nine, which is to authorize the extension of a youth homelessness demonstration program planning grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development through November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Fourteen seventy, to amend the agreement with the Miami Valley Housing Opportunities for COVID-nineteen Street Outreach Services by extending the term through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two in the Resolution fourteen seventy-one, to accept three grants from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for youth homelessness demonstration program in an amount totaling a million six hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That's huge.
I know. This is an additional effort through the homeless system focused on our youth within our community.
Well, that's great.
So, we're excited. Well, and I also think the establishment of that Youth Advisory Board, to have youth with a lived experience at the table is just phenomenal.
It's a best practice. And so, then we're going to, okay, so we're extending the planning grant, so.
Yes.
Okay.
So that it all coordinates in the application of the implementation of the programs.
Great, thank you.
All right, and then I also want to add my congratulations to our Child Support Enforcement Department and through the leadership of Sarah as well for their awards and for their community effort. It does not go unnoticed, definitely. So, I just wanted to say that publicly as well. Thank you. And so, we have a couple more agreements through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Resolution fourteen seventy-two, Prime Two Holdings LLC, GBA, Furniture Express, to provide furniture and delivery services in an amount not to exceed one thousand five, one hundred and five thousand dollars. Fourteen seventy-three, Legal Process Servers Express LLC, to provide process server services in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. And then fourteen seventy-four was Bonadino Group to provide consulting services in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand through February twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second, but I also want to say something. We did a lot of focus on Tom leaving, and now I want to do a lot of focus on you. I know this isn't your first meeting, but, you know, we're just really happy that you took, took on this challenge. You've been with the county how long, Jerry?
It's, it's been a long time.
It's been a minute, I know. It's been a minute. But we're really happy that you have taken this on, and she is now an Assistant County Administrator. And we're just looking forward to our continued partnership with you and.
Well, I thank you, and thank you all for your support.
Absolutely.
As a honeymoon boy.
I'm sorry.
As a honeymoon boy.
Well, you know, that was over a long time ago.
She just has to be up here more often. Well, officially welcome, and, and thank you for taking it on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Business Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services, we have four resolutions and one late item. Under Workforce Development, we have Resolution fourteen seventy-five, authorizes agreement with Miami Valley Career Technology Center for basic skills computer lab services in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three with an option to renew. Under Community and Economic Development, fourteen seventy-six accepts a grant from the Ohio Department of Development for the Dayton Food Bank for staff costs in an amount of three million one hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars.
That's great.
We have two edge agreements. First one is fourteen seventy-seven, Mike Sells, Inc. Project in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars or five point five percent of the total project cost, whichever is less. And fourteen seventy-eight, City Union for the Seahorse Project in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars or point nine five four two percent of the total project cost, whichever is less. And the late item is fourteen eighty-three, authorizes a purchase agreement with the University of Dayton Center for Leadership and Training and Development Services for the BCCIT Department in amount not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Commissioners, I'd just like to say that this project with the food bank is spectacular.
I was going to comment on it.
Michelle and her team are doing a great job. The state asked us to get involved, to be the conduit for the grant. So, this is great for the community, and it gives us an opportunity to continue to distribute fresh food throughout the community. So, thanks for your support.
Well, you know, and it is throughout the whole community. I think that's a, a good point, Michael. You know, people that now use the food bank, some of them have never done it before. And so, we're just thankful that we do have the food bank, that they do the outreach they do. I know Carolyn, I think you, maybe not the last one last week, but prior, you were passing out bags of potatoes.
Right, right. I had the aisle of potatoes, and we, I, during my time there, which was almost at the very, very end of full time, there was between eight or nine hundred cars that stopped you.
You know, it's not going away, you know. There's still food insecurity out there.
Well, and, and the people, and I can tell you this, they were so thankful.
Yeah, sure.
Sincerely thankful, and it's good quality food, you know.
Oh, no, and, and, I mean, that's three million dollars on top of what they already, I mean, this is, this is big, so.
This is big.
I'm glad we were able to have.
It also dovetails with the work Commissioner Dodge has been doing for years, you know, in this space, so.
Yeah, she needs to brag about that. Before we go there, I do want to say this. I am always amused, Chris, by the names that they come up with for the project.
Yeah.
And so, you always try to think of, okay, I wonder what that is. There's Seahorse. I don't know. Could be, it could be interesting.
Honestly, I have no idea where those come from.
I don't either. I like them though.
Well, I was on a panel with Mike Sells, President.
Your favorite chips, yeah.
Smoked bacon. I recommend them there, and they're actually healthy.
You know, I had never really noticed them until you.
Until you told us.
Such a, you know, a desire for them.
We bought them that day over at Gem City.
No, my husband loves that particular flavor.
I recommend them to anybody. Dayton brand.
Smoked bacon. Hundred-year-old company right here from Dayton, Ohio. We love it. So, I will move for approval.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, we come to County Commissioners, and we have a hearing. We do.
I don't think we have a recess, but just out of the bonus caution, Larry, would you raise your hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a proposed revision of the county's flood damage prevention regulations. Over the past year or so, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources has been working with our Building Regulations Division to promulgate an updated set of regulations that would match the model regulations that have been promulgated by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. They've been working with FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, in order for us to maintain our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. And so, we are recommending adoption or approval of the resolution, which would incorporate the most recent language that we've received from ODR, and that would update our language as well as the overall program to reflect the most recent information and best practices that are being used for the floodplain damage prevention regulations. And these are regulations that are adopted by the Board of County Commissioners and then enforced by our Building Regulations Division throughout the area of jurisdiction. We haven't received any comments regarding this proposal. We are recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, looks good. Hopefully, it's rarely necessary.
It's on your screen, Carol.
Not now.
Click one of the tabs.
My tabs went away. Let's see, hang on, folks.
I'm trying to find it. Second, second hearing? Okay.
You got it?
Yep.
It's on Carolyn's.
Okay, all right.
All right, so this is the second and final hearing. I cl-.
Thank you, Larry.
Do I move?
You can move, because you can read it.
Okay. I move to close the second and final hearing on the proposed revisions of the flood damage prevention regulations. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, they are so passed.
Larry, great job putting this together. I know it was a lot of work and working with the state, with ODR, so excellent, excellent job.
Thank you. Everyone was very supportive and helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we have comments by citizens, and we do have Joy Jones. If you could come to the podium and state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to tell everybody how proud I am to be able to attend a meeting like this. I'm usually at work, and I'm just elated. Thank you so, so much for doing everything that you do. It's just beautiful. My heart's full.
Thank you.
I'm here today to, first of all, I live at thirteen oh eight Soldier's Home, West Carrollton Road. I want to address the wells. I, myself, I'm on Five Acres. I have a seventy-foot well. And as you all, I know you're aware of, that the well being compromised from the Gettysburg site, and also Rousch. He's two hundred feet. I'm less than two hundred feet from it. I'm concerned, really concerned, because my well is seventy-foot. I don't know, the EPA doesn't know how far or how big or deep that the water table goes. At least, they said they didn't. And, and I want to say that we've been working with you, Mr. Gruner, and thank you so much, because you did give our group some answers. But I came today because, and I, I just wanted to make it a little more real for you. This came out of my sink before I came here. This came out of my sink before I came here, and I want you to smell it. Just smell it.
Sure.
And I want you to just say whether or not you would bathe, brush your teeth, in my case, wash my clothes, my grandchildren's clothes. You just tell me. Now, I know you guys are doing everything you can, but that's not acceptable. And I, I would do whatever I can to help. I'm certainly not here to bash anyone or say, you know, you need to, whatever we can do to make this right.
Has the water been tested yet?
My te- my, I've been there twenty years. I bought my house twenty years ago. It was tested once because they were like, uh-oh, you were overlooked. And I thought, well, I don't, I didn't know anything about it, because I had normally lived in the city. I didn't know anything about them testing the wells. So, they came out and tested it once, and then when the pandemic hit, they said they weren't testing anymore. And here's the thing, when they tested it the first time, it was more so the hardness of the water. Oh, you have minerals. Well, we, I know that, it's a well.
Yeah.
But we want to know what else is in it.
Do you recall who tested it? Who came out and tested it?
Um...
That's not typical.
It was the county. It was the county.
Did you ask for it?
No, I, I guess you were supposed to be put on a radar or on a something to, so that they would test the people out there every year that I know of.
I think it's local health.
And I did have it privately tested when I got there. They said the same thing, but here's what I found. I found that they don't, they just test for the bare minimum. I didn't know that you had, I don't know what to ask for. What do, what do I say?
Ms. Jones, can we, can we make sure, we'll get, make sure you get your address when you, before you leave today?
Okay.
Can you give your information to Matt Hillier?
Yeah.
Matt's right here.
Oh, I got your name in my...
Public health is aware of this issue. It's a much bigger issue than just your particular parcel. There is some ongoing work in this area, so I'd like you to connect with Matt so we can get your actual ownership and where your well is, and then Matt and his team can get something over to public health so we can make sure that you're included in the testing.
Okay. Now, it's just, it's four of us that do not have, we're not connected...
That's fine.
...to Jefferson Township's well.
That's fine. If, if you don't have those addresses, if maybe you could even give us those names, then we can get those partials and addresses, and we can make sure those get over to public health.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, and I know my vote was right.
Oh.
I voted for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Have a great day.
You don't want that water, I'll take that.
Yeah, you can have it back.
Yeah, I have well water too, so I can sympathize with you.
Oh, you, you know, don't you? All the stuff you gotta buy to just eat your white. Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, we have comments by our county administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, we've got a great event planned for Sunday afternoon, this Sunday coming up, from three to seven, at our Employment Opportunity Center in the West Town Shopping Plaza and on Third Street in Dayton, with the Lovett Pavilion to host an open house and pop-up concert. This is pretty spectacular, and the concert is featuring the Dayton Funk All-Stars. So, they are so good, we are looking forward to this concert. There's going to be food trucks, raffle prizes, dancing, and more. The EOC staff will be there to talk about the facility, our new multimillion-dollar facility in West Dayton, that's around jobs and job training. And talk about some of the things that the facility can offer individuals around getting, getting to work and going back and finding a job. So, the party is at West Town and the shopping center, forty-three oh three West Third Street in Dayton, and I'd like to let everyone know, please, if you've got some time, stop by, have something to eat, and get an opportunity to see the new center. And again, that's the Dayton Funk All-Stars, three to seven P.M. this Sunday afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners.
It's gonna be great. I love our new EOC, and I love Lovett Pavilion and Dayton Funk All-Stars. That is gonna be a Sunday to celebrate.
Yep.
All right. Also, I wanted to mention that last Thursday, we had our Child Support Enforcement got a lot of awards, and so did our Solid Waste Association of North America bestowed awards on our own Bob Downing. He was given the Kevin Ronzo Solid Waste Innovator of the Year Award, so woo-hoo for Bob, and I know Bob is, you know, supported by a great team, so although the kudos go to him personally, it's also to the whole team. And Ray Ray Burke earned the Safety and Excellence Award, as did Brian Ellis, so yay. And you know, it's been quite a week for you all, because right before that, we had the, the new compactor that we celebrated just a week before, and then we had the tire buyback, so you guys are on a roll here. It is, it is.
Now, they're coming into the, aren't they coming to a meeting, Bob Downing, and then that we can congratulate them on their awards?
Yes, we're working on that. Yes.
Awesome. So, we're, we're always proud of you, but we are especially proud of the team when, you know, that they're recognized among their peers across the state and this region for the excellent and outstanding work they do for our citizens, so yay.
Definitely.
For everyone, so thank you, thank you, thank you. And we'll let them know, but let them know how much we, we actually get solid, or we actually get excited about these awards, so thank you.
Well, yeah, Innovator of the Year?
I know.
That's pretty incredible. I don't know who Kevin Ronzo was, but he must have been an innovator in solid ways, but hey, we're pretty happy.
Maybe we'll ask Bob that.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, Bob will know.
That'll be his homework.
So, Carolyn mentioned it, but I wanted to call attention to the tire buyback that was this last weekend. More than ten thousand tires were kept out of our landfill, ten thousand.
And you thought it was gonna be less.
I, I, it did seem lighter than in the past, but I'm glad we hit that ten thousand mark.
You got a lot of the same people doing tires.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, again, great job, team, Matt, thank you so much. And I also want to mention that our next Montgomery County Job Fair is Tuesday, October eighteenth, from noon to four, at the Sinclair Conference Center. So, we encourage everybody that's interested to bring copies of your resume and register online at jobcenter.org. And again, we're gonna have many of our Montgomery County divisions and different elected office holders there, seeking workers, along with many other employees, but the last time we did one of these and we, we invited our other county electives to come, several people were employed with the county on the spot, and so I'm really happy that we're including our, our fellow Commissioners' Engineers' Office. I know you guys are always looking for great qualified people, and so we know the jobs are there, and we just want to help people get connected, so that again is October the eighteenth at Sinclair, at the Conference Center.
Oh, good, okay. Well, and November tenth, at Sinclair Community College, is our twenty-twenty-two Montgomery County Food Summit, and you don't want to miss this exciting event this year. It's gonna be a little different. We are going to go beyond the plate as we celebrate cultures in the kitchen, and we've really been working very hard on some great international, people gonna come and talk about the cultures from their country. So, anyway, we're very excited about that, so it's going to be November tenth at Sinclair, and you can register at our website, mcohio.org, mcohio.org, and also on there, you can find information to nominate someone who deserves to be honored for their amazing efforts in bridging the gap between food and equity. So, that link is also on that website, so thank you.
All right. Our next Montgomery County Commission meeting will be held Tuesday, October fourth, at one-thirty P.M. And before we adjourn this meeting, we are going to have a viewing of the North Gettysburg Rehabilitation Project after this adjourns, so.
Okay.
All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, before we do that, I have to give a shout-out to my fellow Commissioners. Ms. Power fifty over here, Debbie Lieberman, got that award this year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And also, from NCCJ, we were at your event last week for the humanitarian award, so congratulations for you two.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Yep, absolutely. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. I'll, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Look at them all leave. They can't get out of here fast enough.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Right.
I'd like to present to you a relatively exciting project on North Gettysburg Avenue in the city of Dayton. This involves two parallel structures on North Gettysburg Avenue, designated D-A-Y for Dayton, Gettysburg southbound and northbound, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Those abridgings are a little different than what we usually do, because we inherited these bridges from the city of Dayton, and they had a different naming convention. So, instead of going back and changing all the records, we just stuck with those. This is an aerial view of the, the region where the project will take place. The project is located in between Little Richmond and Cornell Drive on North Gettysburg Avenue, also north of James H. McGee Boulevard. This involves two parallel structures on the same road over Wolf Creek. Project scope includes conversion of the existing substructure units to semi-integral abutments due to deterioration of the existing back walls, a thrive beam railing retrofit fit of the existing two-foot safety curb on the interior edges of both bridges, beam painting, upgrading the guardrail, patching and sealing concrete surfaces, and matching, this project will match the existing roadway in alignment. This, on the left is a picture of the northbound bridge looking north, and on the right is the southbound bridge looking south. They don't look to be in terrible shape from above, but then once you get below, you can see on the left and the right, there's significant deterioration to the back walls on both structures. We are, we have soil that is infiltrating through the back walls, and it's starting to lead to sinkholes developing in the road at the top. This has been a slow process, it's been able to be patched and controlled in the meantime, but this project will address the issues there at the ends of the bridge. And that's, on the left, you can see some deterioration to the end of the slab. On the right, you can see the condition of the existing paint system. The existing paint system is failing, and we will remove and replace that as a portion of this project. On the left, you can see the condition of one of the curbs. That is one of the two-foot, two-foot safety curbs there on the left. On the right is the, the conventional five-foot wide sidewalk, and you can see the parapet walls there deteriorate as well. We will be patching both the curbs and the parapets. There are two properties impacted by this project. Both are owned by the Five Rivers Metro Parks, and both properties will need a temporary easement for access to the bridge underneath. Acquisition of zero-point-one-four-five acres of temporary easement is necessary to construct the side, sidewalk, yeah, the sidewalk and guardrail on the west side of the road, and zero-point-one-six acres from parcel twelve and zero-point-zero-three-nine acres from parcel fourteen. This is an image of parcel twelve on the west side of the road, looking west, and this is parcel fourteen on the west side of the road, also looking northwest. Project costs include design fees from a consultant. That contract is set at three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars, or three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and eighteen cents. Right-of-way costs will be determined by real estate appraisal, and the current construction estimate is approximately one million four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to complete the work for a total cost of one million seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and eighteen cents. Project schedule, the project is currently under design. We just completed stage two design, and we are progressing through stage three and then to final plans. Design is, that should, the design schedule there should have been November of twenty-twenty to November of twenty-twenty-two. I apologize, I'll fix that for the, for the hearing. Right-of-way acquisition will begin soon. After the hearing, we will approach Five Rivers for the temporary right-of-way, which we hope to have resolved by December of twenty-twenty-two. Advertising and award, we will be, advertise the project in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three, and we anticipate construction to be, to be completed by the fourth quarter of next year. Do you have any questions?
Beginning, you said that we inherited these bridges, so how, how did that happen? How did we become responsible for city day and riches?
Uh, these are on through routes, and for whatever reason, Dayton was maintaining these, and I don't know when this would have happened.
Is that a state route?
Hmm, well, they were the ones, they may have been the ones who coded them, actually. Maybe that's what happened, because it was a code, no, it's not a state route. It's, it's on a through route, they are the responsibility of, of the county.
All those?
I may have, yeah. Um, yeah, it may have been, you know, it may have been that they, that they were the ones who initially coded these, and that's, sorry for the confusion.
No, 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 it's okay. Just, okay, I clarified it. Gotcha, thank you. I have no questions. I don't think we have the most bridges in the state.
By county, yes.
Well, like, is that because we have all these rivers and creeks and stuff?
Yes, yes, it is.
Well, I know, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, lots of creeks, too.
And all the tributaries that feed all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have no, no one else has any?
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.